This meeting to order. Mr. Manager, I believe we have an outstanding presentation and a number of important things to talk about today.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and members of council. For those that didn't see the news last night, many of us joined our governor and Tom Farrell of Dominion Energy at Camp Pendleton where our mayor gave a welcoming speech as Dominion Energy begins their process of constructing all the infrastructure and the construction of two wind turbines. And so we're very pleased to be there and see that progress coming forward. We scheduled this a little while back after they had an opportunity to provide a briefing to all the C A Os at our monthly luncheon. And so I asked Mr. Bob Crum, who's the executive director of our planning district, to see if he could bring his staff here today to talk about the path to becoming an offshore wind hub. So with that, I'd like to introduce Bob Crum.
Welcome, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Our pleasure to be here again. My name is Bob Crum. I'm the executive director of the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization. I'm joined today by Greg Grutendorf, who many of you have heard before, providing presentations on regional economics for the Hampton Roads region, and also Matt Smith, our senior regional planner. Our honor to be before you today to discuss what we think is a really exciting opportunity for your city and for Hampton Roads overall, the offshore wind industry. Our commission, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, that represents 17 local governments back in November unanimously signed onto a resolution expressing support for developing offshore wind off the coast of Virginia with a lot of emphasis around the opportunity for job creation. Many of the elected officials in our region, 47 members that sit in our commission, were incredibly excited about the possibility of Hampton Roads being uniquely positioned to really support the supply chain for this offshore wind industry. And since our commission adopted the resolution in November, Matt, led by Matt's efforts and Greg and myself, we've really been studying, researching, trying to get ourselves as much up to speed as possible about this opportunity for our community. So with that brief intro, I'm going to step aside and invite Matt Smith up, and he's going to share some information with you for your consideration today. Matt?
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate you all having us here today to talk. This is not an unfamiliar topic to many of you all because of Virginia Beach's historic leadership on offshore wind, but considering there are some new members and the speed at which the environment around offshore wind is changing, we appreciate the opportunity to cover some of the basics, but more importantly, talk to you about how Hampton Roads in Virginia can take advantages of some of the opportunities that offshore wind provides, particularly around job creation. I think it's probably a good idea to start with looking at the landscape, kind of the players around offshore wind in Virginia. You see there in the middle, the general assembly largely controls Virginia's position relative to renewable energy. They're a little bit of a void right now with offshore wind in particular, though. Dominion, as you all know, holds the rights to develop the lease area off of the coast of Virginia, and they're partnering with a Danish company called Orsted to build some test turbines. And the governor's administration is mainly working right now through the Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy relative to marshaling our assets to track the supply chain to Hampton Roads. Another piece of the puzzle is the port. They have some properties that are globally considered to be world-class offshore wind ports, and getting to understand their intentions is going to be a big part of this endeavor. It's also important to know that this is, the East Coast market is really a globally significant market, and that's for a couple of reasons. We have a lot of wind, and we have cities nearby that need the power. We also have, you'll see highlighted there, falling costs. Since 2012, some estimates indicate that costs have dropped 60 percent. So that's making this offshore wind opportunity a lot more viable and competitive relative to other energy sources. Another way to look at this is really just comparing it to the global market. The Department of Energy estimates our pipeline off the East Coast at 28 gigawatts. When you tally up the rest of the world's capacity, it's less than that. We have the potential to double the global existing capacity. Global capacity will grow, but as it is right now, just off the East Coast, we have the potential to double that capacity. So if you think about that opportunity, it's a statistic that really kind of sinks in. There's also some really important benefits to going after this opportunity. One of those, or some of those are environmental benefits, specifically with the opportunity to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The power sector in Virginia right now generates about 34 million tons of CO2 per year. This project could potentially eliminate about 10 percent of those emissions. And I know the city of Virginia Beach has done a lot to understand and plan for the effects of climate change and sea level rise, and this is really the flip side to that resilience coin in addressing that from another perspective. There are also some pretty tremendous job opportunities. Lots of studies have been done estimating how many jobs are associated with offshore wind. The study that the state, the MME, relies on the most indicates that the industry could support around 37,000 jobs per year on the East Coast. So that's a big pie. We would have to compete for our chunk of it, but a pretty significant opportunity. There's been some, I would say, critiques about the types of jobs these would create, that they're just construction jobs that come or go. I think a more optimistic way to look at that is that it would create a pipeline of these jobs, and that pipeline, by a lot of estimates, is expected to expand when the federal government likely will identify new lease areas off the coast. Another important part about these jobs is relative to how our economy in the region grows. It's well understood that economies grow through regional clusters where they have a competitive advantage, and the offshore wind industry could provide both some depth and complexity to some of our important clusters, shipbuilding and repair, port operations and logistics, and really position us well for the future. For example, if we have a concentration in offshore wind jobs, building on that, we might also find ourselves being specialists in battery technology. And the point is that we just don't know, but we want to be in that position to grow from tendrils, for instance, off of that industry. This is a slide where I was considering whether I wanted to include it or not, but it's such a striking statistic, I wanted to. If Hampton Roads were to capture the foundation assembly just for the projects you see up there through New Jersey, it would require the same amount of steel as 10 aircraft carriers. So that can put in perspective just the size of these projects and how many of these turbines would be built. So when we go after these jobs, we have some pretty unique advantages. Our natural advantages are more or less unmatched on the East Coast. We have some really world-class port infrastructure that the Port of Virginia manages and owns. That unrestricted air draft is really important. These turbines are shipped upright, and the vessels need a lot of clearance. So many of our port facilities don't require passage underneath the bridge. Not a lot of other areas can say that. We also have an unparalleled maritime workforce, bar none, some other abundant waterfront land. We're about to have wider and deeper channels, as the manager knows and has been involved with in the past. So we really have some really good advantages, but this opportunity isn't going to fall into our lap. We have some challenges, like to say a little bit of a dose of reality. First point is good news, bad news. We have low electricity rates, which is good, but it also means that wind is a little bit less competitive. We just have less wind than New England, and all of the New England facilities aren't really readily accessible from Hampton Roads. We are more likely to serve the southern ones. I mean, I've highlighted that last bullet there, and it addresses Virginia's renewable energy policy. And on this slide, you'll see a map. It shows every state in America that has what's called a renewable portfolio standard, and that's a standard that requires a certain amount of energy to come from renewable resources. And our competitors on the East Coast also have an offshore wind requirement. So it's really what's driving development so far are these offshore requirements, and we are the only state that is attempting to compete for those jobs without that requirement. So we're in a less competitive position relative to other states, and that's something that we could potentially rectify in a legislative way or maybe in a policy way through the administration. So an example of one of our peer states, Maryland, they are, have had a relatively recent aggressive legislative session relative to renewable energy. They'll have two wind turbines operational by 2023, and that's largely due to those requirements. And Orsted, the company that's partnering with Dominion, is making some onshore investments because of those projects as well. So as I wrap up here, Virginia's strategy is really twofold, focusing on supply chain assets and eventually offshore development. We've done the most work so far in the supply chain. D MME has hired some international consultants to really flesh out our roadmap to attracting the supply chain. Where we are less certain about our future is with offshore development. Until very recently, Dominion has not sent a lot of signals that they're being very aggressive about developing their commercial lease area and not the test area. But just in the past couple of months, they've signaled that they're interested in spending up to $1 billion over the next couple of years on this, maybe generating commercial wind energy by 2024 and building what would essentially be the only vessel that could install these facilities on the East Coast. So while that's good news, it's probably all the more reason for us to consider how we can take advantage of this opportunity in a more aggressive way. So one of the main things I think I want you all to leave with is understanding that offshore wind is coming to Virginia. It's going to happen. It's inevitable. What isn't inevitable is whether we're going to capture the jobs that are related to that opportunity. The states where there be most positioned, most well-positioned for job growth will be the ones that combine both the supply chain assets and the offshore wind development. So the mayor said yesterday that he thinks that we could potentially be a Silicon Valley for offshore wind, and I think that's aggressive but reasonable, but it's going to take action to do that. It's not going to fall into our laps. So we've done a fair amount of work at the PDC to understand how we, as a region, can try to capture this opportunity, and it's really settled on two things so far. Pipeline certainty, so signaling to the market that there will be a certain date by which we'll have a commercial wind operation up and running. And then, you know, action that is associated with that could be support for a state renewable energy mandate, not necessarily, but something that we're going to investigate through our legislative agenda, and also understanding and supporting how the port can use their properties for offshore wind without affecting their container business. And Bob was also good enough to point out today that there's a federal tax credit that makes a lot of these projects viable, and it's set to expire at the end of this year. So it's something else we'd want to address as well. So I think the main thing for this group to think about through your, you know, formal role as a council or through your individual efforts is really, it's important for us to act as advocates to Hampton Roads can take advantage of this opportunity and help our legislators understand how important this is to Hampton Roads as an economic development opportunity. So I'm available to address any questions. Bob's here as well.
Any questions? Yeah, Guy, and then Mr. Hanson.
These two that are being built now, what impact are those having economically? I mean, are they, is Virginia Beach involved, or are they coming out of the port in Norfolk? Or where is the beach in that process?
They're likely going to be involved through some operations and maintenance running out of Rudy Inlet likely to service some of those. They aren't commercial turbines. The point of those, really, and ODU is doing a lot of work on this, is to learn how we can develop our offshore wind opportunity more efficiently so we can do it more quickly.
And my understanding is those are being built, sort of overbuilt, so that they can test them in some fashion that gives us more confidence that they, the market will know that they're, they work where they work and what's actually needed in our particular area?
Sure, that's part of what they want to learn. These will be the southernmost turbines and the most hurricane-prone, so I think that's part of what they want to learn about that project.
The folks that are coming here to go out and build them and test them all are going to be launched out of Rudy Inlet mostly?
I can't say for that for certain, but it's been identified as the most likely port for operating and maintaining these turbines.
Well, I would just comment, I hope we're doing everything we can to be hospitable to those folks while they're here and make them comfortable and give them space to operate and good food to eat and all those things. I'm sure you are, but you only get one chance to make a first impression.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Bellucci, then Mr. Wood.
Thank you. So in your packet on Friday, Bob drafted a letter to talk about the resolutions that you had. I signed, you're a new council. We just thought maybe you might want to reconsider whether or not you would like to relook this resolution and reaffirm your support for wind energy as a member of the Hampton Roads jurisdictions and continue to support this. The number of jobs, as you saw, 37,000 going up there, that'll be competed. New Jersey will be in the game. Delaware will be in the game. Maryland certainly is going to be in the game because they're investing at a faster clip than we are. But hopefully, what Mr. Farrell told the mayor and I and the other members that attended that meeting is that they, they have a more favorable position than they have had in the past. They understand that it's inevitable that we, as a state, remain the only white one up there as opposed to the blue states that have renewable energy as a goal associated with their state and that they're going, the writings on the wall that they get going in this area to help support a healthier environment. So it's up to you. We stand by, and of course, so does the city attorney, to help support drafting a new resolution that you all might want to endorse.
Okay, Mr. Bellucci?
Well, I want to thank the team from the Planning District Commission for being here and for presenting this information. I was excited to read the media reports of the groundbreaking yesterday and, you know, since Mr. Hanson mentioned the resolution, I just wanted to note that since I wasn't here in August of 2018, that I just want to go on record as being hugely supportive of this initiative for not only the opportunities that it presents in job creation, but as well as for the opportunities it presents in clean energy, which I think is a public policy priority and one that I would like to be very supportive of and am enthusiastic about.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wood?
Thanks. So two questions. One, I'm certain you guys are working with the Navy on all this stuff. Okay. The second question is, and I was trying to see it in this literature, where would the transmission lines come ashore? Has that not been determined yet?
Yeah. You're looking at it.
That's what I was hoping.
Right where Dave's sitting over there.
So you envision then transmission lines would come ashore, so in theory, there'd be a facility of some sort located there which would have jobs and investment and that sort of thing?
Sure. The jobs associated with it wouldn't likely be directly related with where it comes ashore, but what we can do as a region to, for instance, assemble these foundations, which are massive, and all the companies associated all over Hampton Roads and Virginia Beach that would have to function as part of that supply chain. So a presence there, but a greater presence throughout our economy.
Okay, anybody else?
I'll tell you, it was impressive yesterday seeing a lot of folks from the state. The governor was there, but especially the message from Dominion Power about their commitment, you know, to move forward for clean energy. And, you know, I believe that, you know, they really want this to be a good thing for everybody. And, you know, like I said, it was a very impressive ceremony yesterday, and I think it is a step in the right direction. Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate you coming over. Mayor, members of council, I've asked Tom Nicholas to come back to talk with us a little bit about moving forward with what will be a key, key investment on how we realign our municipal center and the costs associated with moving forward in that direction. And so if you will indulge us a little bit today, I'm going to let Tom resurface our conversation. We continue to get back on our feet across all of our departments and our various offices and divisions that provide services to our citizens. Happy to say that our workforce has their sleeves rolled up and are doing an excellent job at acclimating to the strain of what has befallen us over the last 30 days. And I think our clients, our customers, our citizens are seeing that we are getting our RPMs back up and we're being able to be more productive and responsive to the requirements of delivering public service. But the infrastructure piece is long-term. The infrastructure piece is not something that's going to happen overnight. There's short-term, there's intermediate, and then there's a longer-term solution. Our intermediate window is probably three to five years, somewhere in there, four years as an average. And how do we exist in a temporary decentralized location? That is, of course, another whole task that we are working on. I did pass to you all in a email today a response to Mr. Moss, who's on vacation, who was inquiring as to conversations that we're having with schools, et cetera. And we'll be back, and you saw that in the announcement from Amanda's office, the agenda for next week. We're going to bring that to you in a conversation next week. And just so that you understand that we're going to try and get ourselves stabilized for that, for that average four-year period on all four of those departments. What Tom's going to talk about, just to resurface the conversation, is the longer-term solutions. So Tom?
Sir, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Woods, members of city council, Mr. Manager. So two weeks ago, I talked to you about three distinct options that we could pursue as far as recovering Building Two and relocating our four displaced departments. I assure you that in the package you have, Slides Two through 14 are exactly the same as you saw before. Put them in the package in case there were questions during this meeting. You didn't have to be wondering, where did I put those? You've got them right in front of you. I'm not going to go into great detail on those options again, but just wanted you to know that they haven't changed. The first option in a snapshot again was to stop City Hall construction as it is now, take existing CIP funds, design the current 134,000 square foot building to be a 234,000 square foot building, co-locating Public Works, IT, Utilities, and Planning with the City Hall somewhere in the vicinity of the south side of the existing Building Two, then taking Building Two down, and at the end of that process, renovating either Building One or Building 11 for the police department. And the only couple of things I wanted to remind you on that, that particular option requires no money right now. You know, we have money to proceed down that path in the current fiscal year without having to talk budget, and so that option could be refined in a budget cycle. But it does require pretty immediate action if we were going to do that, in that we are about to sign a contract with Mackenzie for the construction of the new City Hall. And so if we did want to do this, we wouldn't want to wait a couple of months and then decide. Option Two was a very different concept. We were going to do a design-build renovation of Building Two for the police department and then follow on with the design-build renovations of Buildings One and 11 for the four departments. And I'm not, we're not at the point yet to say which departments go in which buildings, but I assure you that Public Works, Public Utilities, Planning, and Information Technology fit nicely into Buildings One and 11, kind of however you mix it up, and we will figure that out. But in, option Two was a Public-Private Education Act process, similar to what we did with the sports center. It's a very fast process. It doesn't require the city to do very much upfront work, sort of listing requirements, and then get the community to tell us how they would do it. But based on when we wanted to do it, and that's here in the schedule, if I was going to sign a comprehensive agreement by the first of April 2020, then I need $30 million in this current fiscal year to do that, and that's a heavy lift from where we are. You know, that's not, that's an out-of-budget cycle, fine $30 million for that kind of work. Option Three was the same up-and-down lift on the buildings. It was a renovation of Building Two for the police department and renovations of Buildings One and 11 for the four displaced departments. However, we'd do it with a more traditional design-build approach where we would take the time in this year to have a design-build bridging document prepared by Mosley Architects, who's done a lot of work with us already. We would put that on the street in the spring for, again, competitive bids, and we would award a construction contract after July of next year, which pushes the construction cost of that piece into the budget cycle for discussion next spring with you. Doesn't require you to come up with that money now. So we did not, we did not provide a recommendation last time, and I don't want to presume to be telling you what choice you need to make. What I wanted to show you through this presentation was if you were to make this choice, how I can find the funds and how we could proceed to do something if you were so inclined. And then next week, at the actual council, the formal session, you're going to see an ordinance prepared for development of a CIP and the transfer of funds, and I didn't want you to see that without knowing, well, where was the money coming from and how was this going to work? So if it were up to us right now, we would recommend going ahead with option Three so we can do something now without committing us to big-time dollars, which we can talk about in the budget cycle. And we would create a new CIP 3174 that would look something like this. And I'll show you where the program funding, the appropriated-to-date, and that line comes from. Again, from our options, our budget estimate on this whole thing is $83 million. That's, again, ignoring the $50 million for the City Hall, which is in those totals, but it's for this particular renovation of Two, One, and 11, and I would need $4 million in fiscal year 20 to do that work. So where would I get that? So I've been busy. We had a CIP 3025 for Building Two electrical upgrade, which has a balance of a little over $2 million in it. We have a CIP that you just approved in this last budget cycle for Building One renovations, which had $800,000 in this fiscal year in it, and then a follow-on of a million. We had some work going in facilities planning services, which is CIP 3157, that I can cancel. And Management Services tells me that there is a general fund, fund balance of about $980,000 that they could make available for this CIP if needed. And then we could address $30 million in FY '21, which is for the actual renovation of Building Two during the FY '21 budget process. So by that point, I'd have a much better number than $30 million. It would be based on some work that we will have done before then. And then a follow-on, $49 million in '22 for the renovations of Building One and 11. And again, those numbers would be refined as time goes on. Now, let's talk about where that money's coming from. Several years ago, you approved a rather important project for Building Two electrical upgrade. It was sort of a two-step process. A number of years ago, we put on a new generator, put in automatic transfer switch, and fixed up the basement for the Information Technology Department. This project follows that with electrical upgrades to the rest of the building. Not really necessary right now. If we're going to renovate Building One, that money can be, that work can be done as part of that greater renovation and doesn't need to be done now while the building is vacant, especially when, if we were to get in and renovate it, we might take a lot of this work out. So doing it now doesn't make sense. The description at the bottom is just the description of the CIP. There's nothing new in that. But as you can see, it had a program funding of $2,138,400, which was all in appropriated-to-date, and we'd spent about $75,000 of that was it. So the rest was sitting there, ready to go forward with construction, which we've stopped. Building One renovations, again, pretty big topic, especially last spring when we were building a new City Hall. What are we going to do with Building One? We did not decide what we were going to do with Building One, but we did get the CIP approved and got some seed money put in it. And if you remember, there was $800,000 in FY '20 and $2 million in FY '21, with the future amounts sitting out there for y'all to deal with later as to whether or not you did or did not want to proceed with something significant with renovating Building One. So at this point, there's $800,000 sitting in ATDs. We do have to renovate Building One as part of this option. We don't know the extent or who for or what that's exactly going to cost, but that money is already sitting there and could be used for that. Public safety building renovation, that would have been next anyway. I mean, after we built the new City Hall and renovated Building One and we moved some departments out of Building Two into Building One, Building 11, which is where the police department in First Precinct is housed, is really in need of repair. And so we did get an approved CIP through this last budget cycle, although we didn't really address the costs. Put $1 million out in FY '23, just so it's a placeholder, and it's in the book as an approved CIP. So there's no appropriated-to-date, and that million is sitting out there. So, sorry, the yellow shows up better on a computer screen than it does on television. In FY 1920, in facility planning, we were working on three things that just happened to be lucky. We had Mosley Architects onboard doing a public safety building programming study. We already had them working on what would it take to put the police in a renovated building. We had Mosley Architects working on a Building One repurposing programming study of the four departments in Building Two, who goes into Building One optimally and what would their laydown in Building Two look like. And we also had them working with us on a municipal center facility renovation sequencing. If we were going to renovate buildings at the municipal center, how would we do that? One, it got them working on things that we're now glad they're working on because they know a lot of information that's going to prove very helpful. But it's also at the point where I can cancel those, and I already have, and recover that $154,000 from those and roll it into this larger project. So again, at the end of the day, programmed funding, there's $4 million in the eight million. So, again, at the end of the day, programmed funding, there's $4 million in the ATDs, the $2 million in FY '21 is just sitting there from the Building One renovations, the $1 million in FY '23 is sitting there from the Building 11 renovations, that total seven, and I showed you where I got the $4 million. So, wouldn't need any new appropriation of funds. I'll cover it all within facilities, except for the general fund fund balance transfer. And that's how I could do this. If you were inclined for me to move forward, I would get Mosley Architects onboard, doing bridging document development by about the middle of July, literally 15 days from now. They would work six to seven months to get that done in order for us to put the bridging documents out on the street next spring for a larger construction contract. And the actual numbers for what that would cost in construction would be presented to you in the next budget cycle, and you'd have an opportunity to say yea or nay at that point, as far as whether you wanted to spend those significant dollars. So, that's where we're at. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, I'd like to jump on the end of this briefing, if I might. Mr. Mayor, please.
Right ahead.
All right, thank you. So, because there is a sense of urgency for all of us here in the government of Virginia Beach with this unfortunate circumstance, I asked Bob Mathias, and Bob, if you're out there listening, you need to come back in the room, because I'm going to call on you in about 30 seconds. And we prevailed on our mayor to address a letter to our governor to request assistance in this very large construction bill. You can see that what we're talking to you about is the pre-engineering to get 30% designs so that we can get reputable firms to come forth and take a good, hard look at this three-building project.
Yes, sir.
And be able to have an opportunity to give us viable bids and to put it on as tight a timeline as we could possibly do. And so I asked Bob to draft a letter, and we worked on it for the mayor and got the mayor to send it forward. So, I'm going to ask Bob to come to the podium real quick and just give you, give you an idea of what we're requesting, because, you know, I think you all need to know what we're asking our state to help us out with, and then to give you some feedback. Of course, no guarantees of what's going on, but to give you what I believe to be the best legislative assistant that any city manager can have, and give you his thoughts on where we might be.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Mayor, Members of Council, we reached out, right after the event, to Delegate Night. And Delegate Night has been, I was just on the phone with him when I came down here, trying to go through some of the details. Some of the things we're doing besides the money is making sure the state code is amended so that the donations to the people are tax-exempt from state taxation. We think we've got the federal tax issue handled, but we're going to do a resolution, and the governor will probably announce a proclamation, which will make all that straighten out. We're doing Delegate Night, and Senator De Staff are doing memorial resolutions for all the victims, and we're also doing a commending resolution for the first responders. So, that's all good stuff. The money we're asking for, and I went up and talked to Secretary Lane and other members of the cabinet three weeks ago, and they were somewhat responsive and wanted to do something. Last week, I went to the Democratic Retreat in Warren Springs to talk to as many of the Democrats as possible. Basically, we have the Republicans, the Democrats, we have the Senate and the House and the Governor's Office that we're all going to have to work with. And I think they'll all come together and work for this. But what we've been saying is a $10 million outright cash grant and a $20 million no-interest loan, which would save well over $7 million over the life of the loan. It would have a 5% coupon. Taylor Adams and I were just talking about that, actually. And although it would sell for less, it'd have a 5% coupon. And I've gotten very good response from everyone I've talked to. One person did put a little caveat on it about some sort of quipper crow, but other folks said, no, Virginia Beach needs our help. We don't need to be trying to bargain with them about action on the governor's initiatives. Although I think you all will take some additional mental health, and I believe that's part of the governor's actions. So, we've gotten as many people as we could to reach out and touch members of the delegation and the governor's office. Senator Stolli has been great, or excuse me, Sheriff Stolli, old habits die hard. Sheriff Stolli's reached out to the Senate Majority Leader, who's in the other chairman, co-chairman of Senate Finance Committee, and he's talked to a whole bunch of people. And we're trying to get this done during the special session next week. It's a little touchy, because the special session so far has not been called for anything other than the governor's initiatives. We're hopeful that they will be, get permission to open the budget up during the special session, something they really don't want to do, but I think Delegate Night and the rest of our delegation, but especially Delegate Night, I hope he's listening, will bring us across the finish line. I feel fairly confident we're going to get a substantial amount of money. And what we don't get in this special session, we'll be back in January with y'all's endorsement. When I spoke to Aubrey Lane two weeks or three weeks ago, we said we'd follow up with the letter right away, and that's why the mayor sent the letter to the governor, to let him know what our interests were. I talked to the governor three times in the last week. I saw him at the bill signing for the Oyster Bill last week. I saw him, again, Wednesday night at the retreat, and saw him again yesterday, and the mayor got him aside and was talking to him. So, I think we're doing a full-court press. I sure hope and pray that we're going to be successful. And I think the General Assembly really wants to help us. I had so many members of the delegation, especially at the Democratic Caucus, break down into tears when I told them the story, some of the things that had happened, and they're very concerned about me, they're very concerned about the city, and they're, what we're trying to say is that we're actually, the city is at a disadvantage right now economically, because we're not servicing the citizens in the way they're used to being serviced, because we're in 28 different locations, spread out all over the city. And so until we get these buildings fixed and move the people back where they can properly address the citizens' needs, issue permits and things like that, we're going to be a drain on the economy, the Commonwealth.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Wood?
Well, you know, based on all that, and I know, Dave, you and I've had this discussion about getting these bridging documents done and getting bridging documents in theory done for Building One, Building 11, and Building, both the current Building One, Building Two, and then Building 11. But then I also see we're talking about as April of 20, when these documents would be done. It would just seem to me, if there's any way that we could accelerate that and work on, I realize it's complex, and I realize the idea is to bring in an entity that's large enough that could do this project. I just think anything that we can do to speed up the process. I mean, this is not a normal situation. I've had a lot of people comment to me, and I got to tell you, everybody is, has a good attitude about it, but a lot of people in the building industry are frustrated, I guess is probably the best way to say about, you know, the whole process with permits. And if you go over there now, and I'm sure it's going to be better in August, once they move to the temporary space, but right now, it's extraordinarily difficult. You know, plans examiners are working in eight places this size and that sort of thing. I just, I just think that anything that we can do to be better than that April deadline, because you're talking, you know, almost, what, 10, 11 months, and I think we can do better than that. I'm hopeful we can.
So, two comments. One, we're going to move planning into a leased facility at 2875 Sabre Street in about the middle of August, and the whole interaction with the planning department will become much more normal, similar to the way it was when they were on the first floor of Building Two, with the exception of, they won't be here at the municipal center, they'll be at 2875 Sabre Street.
That'd be convenient for us.
Again, the bridging documents.
The problem with that is, is if, and just going forward, if you have to go to Public Utilities for some aspect of your building permit, or if, you know, you have to get something straight with a business license or something like that, you know, going from zoning over there, you're still going to have to go to different places. So, even though I understand it's going to be, it's going to be better, it's not, as Dave, or as Bob says, not the way our citizens are used to it. And I understand that it's difficult times, but what I'm saying is, I just think it needs to be done as quickly as possible so that we can return.
The target we set was, I can't, without some other financial input, target a construction award until after July 1st of next year. So, I was giving Mosley as much time as I could give them, knowing that I could solicit and have bids received and be ready to award in July of next year. If I were to cut them shorter than that, we would just be holding paper for a longer period of time. 35% design on three major buildings for five departments is no small trick. You know, they will have three teams of people dedicated to this around the clock, because it's mechanical and electrical and structural and the interior layout and space and function. If I can, I'd like to get it right. So, I will push them, but I don't want to be artificially short.
Right. But I mean, I think we could easily get three separate A and E firms, one on each building, if we really, really needed to.
Well, not, I would have to do that competitively, and if I do that competitively, I'm going to lose 60 to 90 days.
There's a lot of reasons why we can't get there. I think there, I think there are reasons that we can get there, and I think if it's a financial situation, this council, you know, can meet and figure out how to do that. I just think it's, expedience is important. So, that's what I'm trying to say.
Point taken, point taken.
And Ms. Henley?
This certainly does show that, you know, sometimes we just don't appreciate what we've got until we don't have it anymore. I think this municipal campus has just, has been an outstanding thing that has grown since the 60s, and we just took it for granted. And now that we see we don't have it, we really do understand how good it was and how important it is to try to get it back. And I know that in your presentation, you were talking about some of these buildings we were planning to do anyway. It's just that now that all has to be compressed, and I really appreciate you all being forward-thinking enough to say to the state that you can help us in this fashion. And I think that would be tremendous if they could do what you all have proposed, and, you know, we can all bring it together as fast as we can. It's good that we've got them thinking along these lines and.
Anybody else?
Delegate Night will be able to use his magic to get it done.
Yeah, Sabrina.
I'm glad that you brought the letter up, Dave, because I heard about it. Some people asked me about it, and I wasn't aware of it. And I guess my question is, I guess going forward, when things of this nature have to take place, I'd just like to know and to be in the loop as far as, and I'm sure all council would, but I'm just speaking for myself, because when I'm asked about questions of this nature, and I don't have information on it, I don't know where it, you know, where it came from, if it was the best option, and I just think that that's something that in the future, if we could make sure that we're abreast of those decisions, and I think that would be a good thing.
I will take responsibility for not having, taking the final copy and got it scanned in and sent an email to you all, just so you know that letter went out. I'll take responsibility for that. That was a drop ball inside the two offices, executing the document and getting it down-range. It was, it was rather an expedient timeline to get that thing done, and I spent last weekend working on it, so I'll take that hit.
But I'll also make sure that going forward, that, you know, we all got to be in the loop. And I think, you know, last week, you know, was a request from everybody that we have more deliberations on this type of thing, and we actually allotted a lot of time. And, you know, the thing is too, especially Council Lady Wilton, with your, you know, really good ideas about wanting to get all the, the whole campus to be safe buildings, you know, these are discussions that are going to be going forward. Your odd ideas about where and how to locate the memorial and everything, there's going to be a lot of things coming. And one of the things I was, and I wanted to get this to the governor. And just so you also know, that even yesterday, you know, Senator Warner's representative reached out and said, whatever we need, and when, you know, Senator Kane was in town, you know, we have resources that want to help us. And I think in terms of just getting this done, you know, getting back to business right away is really important, and right now, we're fragmented and everything. And I think it will also show our employees, which I know you have an avid interest, and we all have an avid interest, that we're moving proactively to get this campus back to a normal situation as quickly as humanly possible. And quite frankly, the other thing is, you know, in spite of this tragedy, we still got to operate as a city. We have the storm water, we got sea level rise, we got, you know, in the billions of dollars, but then also, we got schools that are going to be asking for $3 billion for renovation and everything. So, whatever monies that we can get, you know, through external sources, you know, whether it be through the state or, you know, with federal help, you know, that's money that we continue to, you know, put toward, you know, those projects that, you know, that we've been, you know, talking about, that, you know, moving forward. So, you know, but once again, I'll assume the, you know, thing, and I'll make sure that any communications that I do, or, you know, go out to anybody, I will, you know, with the manager, make sure that the council is informed. But, you know, like I said, when these things, things have been moving kind of fast and furious over the last couple of weeks, and, you know, but once again, you know, just trying to get some input, so we may get a favorable decision at the special session, you know, to get that in an extremely timely manner was essential.
Okay.
All right. You know, remember, we are at the beginning of a very long road, and there are going to be many discussions like we're going to be having here today that are going to be ongoing. You know, once the results of the special session are in, that'll give us some path. And the other thing is, once the, you know, the police and all the investigative things are concluded and that's moving forward, that's only going to be the beginning of many discussions going forward. Mr. Wood?
So, are you looking for direction?
I, all the time, to be honest with you.
You'll have the opportunity, sir, for a vote next week.
About this specific issue is what I'm talking about. Are you looking for consensus, the council, or what?
I think if you want to, if, we got to do something. This the way, we've looked at it, there's no other way to get there but what we're proposing here. And we got to hope that we get some help from the General Assembly to offset this bill. And we've got to, you know, we got a bunch of CIP work we got to go through and say, where can we, where can we maybe move some dollars around and push some projects out? But, you know, y'all are vested in that CIP to the nth degree. Y'all, you know, approve it every year, and you go through it with a fine-tooth comb. So, that'll be a tough, tough one to do. You saw David Bradley's letter to you in Friday about what happens if we throw all $83 million into it, we don't break, we don't break our metrics. You saw Alice's letter on the three rating agencies, results on our upcoming 120-plus-million-dollar bond issuance, and how good you all look in the eyes of Wall Street. You're getting a lot of street cred for your efforts on stormwater and a 15-year program. You're in a very good posture. This is just so unfortunate that we're having to, but we're in such a different position than most jurisdictions to be able to absorb this and work through, work through the issues. But we're going to need state support to be able to do that.
Aaron, and then Jess.
I'd like to at least read the letter, get a understanding, language, what it says, going forward, in order to give direction on it. I don't, I don't even know about this letter, so I'd like to read it first and.
The letter's requesting dollars for construction assistance.
I guess that $10 million grant, $20 million interest loan, 5% coupon, I still, I like to read it, so I understand it more.
We'll have a copy to you and before.
We got a copy of it.
We got a copy of it.
We got a copy of it.
Was it in our packet?
Yeah.
No, it was, well, it was sent through email, wasn't it?
Yeah. It's just a letter from the mayor.
We'll get you a hard copy.
Yeah, we got a copy of it.
Bob?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Jess.
I just had a question, kind of a general question, Dave, about how with all of this potential money that we're going to be moving around, how does that position us, I guess, in anticipation of potential issues in terms of hurricane season? I mean, are we, we're not in any danger of not having emergency money or anything like that?
You saw the ratios that David and, and it's mainly the letter associated with what we're talking about on moving these dollars around, but quite frankly, the fund balance will be about 9.94, somewhere around.
9.9.
9.9. So, we're well in the mid-range of our, of our 8% to 12%. So, we're, we're pretty much where we standardly are. We can, we can bring you the graph of where we are each year. We try not to talk too much. I got to find real wood underneath here. I got to find real wood underneath here. Try not to talk too much about hurricanes and big hurricanes because those are the most devastating, and we're working on those. And normal storms, we'll be fine.
Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Rosemary?
Couple little things. So, so I guess you've looked at the end-of-the-year fund balance, and you say it's close to ten million. It's going to...
No, it's close to ten percent.
Ten percent.
Ten percent, okay. Do we have any idea what our fund balance may be and about, an estimate?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and...
But I mean, the, uh, end-of-the-year fund...
So, so, Councilman Wil, so we project our fund balance, and we show it in the executive summary. And as, as the city manager said, we'll try to be eight to twelve percent of the final year.
At the end of this fiscal year, June...
So we will know more in the next month or two. So what I'm given is an estimate. We were at about ten percent when you adopted the budget with this roughly million dollars. It takes about a tenth of a percent away, so we think we'll be around nine point nine percent. We're a little conservative, you know, when, when we're doing that because we're doing that in March, April. You know, personal property doesn't come in at June 5th, and a lot of our real estate tax. So usually, we do a little better than that. So, you know, it'd be very possible we're ten plus, but, you know, when we're projecting, we try to be a little conservative. But we'll know more in the next month when all the revenues...
And they'll be to fit, keep us in that eight to ten million-dollar range? I mean, eight to ten percent, eight to twelve percent.
Yeah, we, we try to hit ten percent. We think that's a safe position for hurricane comes like, like we had before. It gives us some flexibility to address concerns, so.
I just want to say, I mean, government, this is what we do, and we have to function. We have to provide these services for our citizens. That's what they are relying on us for. So I, I like your recommendation. I'm with Jim, if there's any way that we can move it up possibly, even if we have to use some of the fund balance to get that started and pay it back in the budget next year or whatever we have to do. But I, I think it's a great, a great option.
So let me, let me bring back to your attention what we're asking for here to get to the four million. We're really going to move in the first three areas. We're just going to move already appropriated dollars and consolidate that into do it. But we're just asking to take a million dollars out of, just a million, not ten million. I thought I heard you say ten. But just a million, just a million, to get you to four million, and we're going to be able to be functioning. That, that's what gets you to about that nine point nine, is take another million out of what we are currently, or, I guess we're in July, I'm wrong. What we were last week operating in the year of execution nineteen, we're now in twenty budget, but we're fine.
But if we had that thirty million that we're going to need in the budget next year earlier, could we move this up faster?
That's what we're asking the state for.
We're asking that for the state, but believe me, we will be hard at work during the summer and the fall figuring out. We'll see how the conversation goes in the special assembly. We'll see how, how, you know, people's desire to assist is strong now. This special session is important. How they feel in January and February, I don't know if they even remember us, and I hope they do, but we, we need to strike now and take advantage of this. And then, then we know what we got to carve out dollar-wise. We still have to pay that twenty million, even though they're offered a zero-interest loan. And, and, you know, if they gave us one-third of the additional costs that we, that we are bearing for this one incident, on top of all the other costs that we've got going on to be in an interim location and to establish all the stuff that we're doing just to, to function for the next four years, it's a lot more than that. So we, we're going to figure out how to fund all that. We'll spend the summer and the fall figuring out what that financing is. We'll have a good idea whether or not we got a grant to offset one-eighth of the cost, which is ten million. And, you know, interest associated with the other twenty is added in or it isn't added in. And we still have the other renovations that we're now forced to do in a much more timely manner. So it forces our hand on all the other buildings to, to be able to tackle building two. So we will figure this out. And what we wanted to show you is, even if we just said, we're going to go bond sale it all, we have the capacity to do it with the metrics. What we didn't tell you is, you got a debt service associated with it, and just, you know, it's, just, I do a one-to-ten ratio. David does it a lot more, but if you borrow eighty, you got to have eight million to pay your debt, and sometimes that's a plus or a minus depending on the market.
Anybody else at this point? Thank you for the update.
So I, yeah, that'd be good. So item number three for your, for your council briefings is really a discussion on our independent consultant review, and I would defer to the vice mayor to take it from there.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Go right ahead.
The, the city auditor is, is here as well, and I think it might be good to kind of toss it to Lyndon to, to, to talk a little bit about what, what he sees in terms of the process for this, because I know that last week, there was, there were some comments and concerns about, you know, exactly how far and what the auditor's involvement would be. And we'll tell you, I'm, I'm happy that, that most everybody was, has signed on to this, and, and I think that's great. You know, there's, there's been, you know, additional requests to tweak language and things like that, but I think, I think it's, it's, it's pretty, pretty well-established. So with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'll call on the city auditor to talk a little bit about this.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council. Obviously, I've been paying attention in anticipation of the resolution coming forward. So first of all, in regards to my role, I've read the resolution, and I clearly understand my role. We are, my office is the contract administrator for the external independent audit of the city's financial statements. So in that role, I see very similar responsibilities in regards to administering the contract, selecting the vendor, being a liaison to putting them in touch with the necessary point of contact within the city. So in the audit of the financial statements, in no manner do we actually conduct work. In no man, manner do we influence them in regards to areas they're going to review, exceptions they're going to report, or nor do we even have any input in regards to the final report. So I see that role very similar, as a liaison to ensure it is smoothly gets off the ground. So I actually did have some notes for myself, but I think it would probably be useful for not only the council, but the public and citizens that are, that are interested in kind of seeing what the approach is in anticipation that the resolution does in fact go forward. If it doesn't, then obviously, all of this is off the table. Okay, so there are a couple of things I, I want to clarify, especially to the public. There is a declaration of local emergency that has in fact already been declared, okay? And that was, happened on the evening of five thirty-one, the date of the tragedy. Furthermore, on June fourth, the council passed an ordinance confirming that declaration. So the cries of, we need, we need to declare an emergency so we can expedite this process, a declaration has, of emergency has already been declared and confirmed by the council, okay? Today's July the second, so in anticipation that council passes the resolution for an independent review, we're ready to move forward, okay? Time is of the essence, okay? So I have met with the city's purchasing agent. I spoke, as a matter of fact, with the purchasing agent for the city of Charlottesville, as well as the Charlottesville deputy city attorney. I've obtained their engagement letter. And the purpose in regards to speaking with Charlottesville's purchasing agent, their deputy city attorney, is to understand the solicitation and procurement method they utilize to expedite the process, okay? Normal RFP process, we're going three to four months. We're trying to expedite this as opposed to a three to four months, a three to four weeks, if not sooner, okay? I've also obviously have read the Virginia Public Procurement Act. In speaking with the city's purchasing agent, we have, she has actually issued a memo to me approving the use of emergency procurement method for the external investigation, okay? And this was supported, obviously, by the declaration of the city manager, as well as the ordinance of the city council. And basically, what that section that we are going to utilize, because we still have to operate under the guise of the procurement act, under section two-point-two dash four-three-oh-three of the Virginia Public Procurement Act, Section F, methods of procurement. In case of emergency, a contract may be awarded without competitive sealed bidding or competitive negotiation. However, such procurement shall be made with such competition as practical under the circumstances. So because of the emergency of the situation, this is the section we are citing to forego the full RFP process that would be required if we were procuring services such as an external auditor, okay? As I mentioned, that would take three to four, three to four months, okay? So we will have some competition as is practical, with the end in mind of bringing in a firm that has the capability and expertise, but doing it in an expeditious manner, okay? If the resolution passes tonight, we have a solicitation that we will finalize this evening, okay? And it'll be issued first thing in the morning, okay? So because we've, are ahead of the game, we have a solicitation proposal ready to go out first thing in the morning, okay? We've done some legwork in regards to who we are going to solicit. So there's going to be some firms on the, coming from the Federal General Services Administration. So they're on a GSA contract, okay? So if you're on a GSA contract, you've been vetted by the GSA at the federal level, okay? We've also looked at the State Department of General Services at the state level. So firms that are on contract at the DGS, in essence, they have been vetted. We have also done some investigation into, we used to source a global investigation review, GIR top one-hundred firms. Those are law and practice of international investigations, okay? One firm that is on there, that if you've been reading and paying attention, that, you know, a lot of citizens are throwing out there, is the firm that conducted the investigation in Charlottesville, okay? So they are on that, that firm, okay? They are on that list. Because we've done the legwork, we want to make this as expeditious as we can. We want to be quick, but we do not want to be rushed, okay? We want to be quick, but we don't want to be rushed, okay? So the proposal, what we're planning, is going to be open for seven days, okay? It'll close next Friday. That will allow us to have serious bidders, okay? Serious bidders are those that have put proposals together for not necessarily a specific tragedy like this, but on large scales, investigations, reviews, consulting work, okay? So serious and qualified bidders, ample time while balancing the fact that we want to be expeditious but without rushing. As I mentioned, three to four months, our goal is three to four weeks, if not sooner, okay? And that's going from not having a vendor, putting a solicitation out on the street, receiving all the solicitations, reviewing and vetting, selecting, and then entering into a contract with a vendor, okay? We're obviously not just looking, we're not looking for the lowest bidder, okay? We're looking for the best value, and that is experience and resources to perform such an important undertaking. Do they have the manpower, okay? Do they have the resources to gather? You know, in some of the firms we investigated, there are firms, consulting firms, where they may not necessarily be a law firm, but they have access to, as part of their team, lawyers, okay? IT folks, folks from, with federal government experience, be it, you know, some of the, some of the higher-level-type federal agencies, okay? One thing is, we do want the buy-in and the trust of our citizens, our employees, okay? So we do want to engage a firm that does not have any conflicts. And when we're talking about conflicts, we're talking about in fact or in appearance, okay? So conflict in fact or in appearance. And when we're talking about conflict, are you doing business with the city currently? Are you projected to do business with the city? Because to me, that is a conflict, okay? And that's just something that, you know, through, through discussions, that I think it's important to have it in there, because there are, are many we can choose from that do not have a conflict in fact or in appearance, okay? I've read the various reports from various investigations, as I'm sure many of you have, including the ones from Charlottesville, Virginia Tech, San Bernardino, Washington Navy Yard. Unfortunately, those reports are out there. You know, this is a day and age where they're plentiful, okay? So I think I have a good understanding of what I think the end product should look like. And it's pretty much spelled out in the resolution that many of you are sponsoring, okay? We want it to be thorough. We want to answer the questions of citizens, the employees, and also of the family members that want answers, okay? So that is what we're, we're looking for. I'm confident that I will, I will be able to select a firm that will meet your expectations as the council, as well as the expectations of the family and the citizens and our employees that were impacted. I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Rosemary?
I just want to compliment Lyndon on how you've presented this. You know, you presented it, we, we need the information, we need the facts, we're going to be expeditious, but we also have to do it compassionately.
Yes.
And you're definitely the, the right person to handle this, and just want to compliment your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Sabrina?
And I'd like to echo the, the sentiment of thanking you for putting this together. I was the one that was very passionate about expediting the investigation and the meeting last week.
Yes.
And with that being said, I ask for specific language to make sure that we are expedited in the process as soon as we find an independent investigator to do the work. And then also, that was added to the resolution, the fact of your role as a, a point of contact.
Yes.
And so I guess, looking at the process with, say for instance, is it possible to, without even going through the RFP process, to work with the attorney from Charlottesville, I believe his name is Tim Heapy?
He...
Heath. Is it, is it possible to cut out that whole RFP process, go directly to this person who's, works in the Attorney General's office, see if he would be able to help spearhead this effort, and you can cut out that whole process? effort, and you can cut out that whole process and even expedite the investigation more?
Well, the, based on the resolution, it's engaging in a, you know, a firm or individual. The firm that Mr. Heefe once worked for, obviously, he no longer works there, he is the general counsel at UVA now. So he is a state employee, he doesn't work for a firm unless he, or, but he could be an independent consultant if he's working on the side. The way that the resolution is stated to engage a firm or for individual, if Mr. Heefe did in fact want to put in a bid as an independent contractor, we can do that. But in regards to the Procurement Act, it does state, we're practical, because while I'm sure, and I've read his report, and it was very detailed, we do want to see if there are others out there, and I'm sure there are, that can do the job as well. But if he is a independent contractor and wants to do that on the side, aside from his current position as general counsel for UVA, wishes to do that, we will evaluate and we welcome anybody or any firm that wants to put in a proposal.
So if he's, I guess my question is more so, because I understand he's a part of the Attorney General's office as well. So if we were to go directly to the Attorney General's office and request and investigate, that they help with the investigation, can we do that?
I'm sure, and that's probably a question more for Mark, or, you know, whatever firm, I'm sure whatever firm we contract in, if there are individuals such as Mr. Heefe or others out there, I've, I've started getting unsolicited emails of individuals that said they can help or has expertise. There's nothing that would disallow a firm that we engage with engaging individuals to either subcontract or bring on as part of a team, as a subject matter expert. So I think there's ways, if somebody deems it necessary, to bring in an individual such as Mr. Heefe as part of the team. I think they can go, go about that route, as opposed to, you know, getting specific direction from the, the Attorney General.
I'd just like to make that, see if that is something that we can do. One of the reasons is that it cuts down on time, because I understand with the Charlottesville investigation, to my understanding, they were able to get that investigation started within about 13 days. And so if that's something we can do to take some time and shave that time back, that would be my preference.
Well, we're, we're having it on the street in seven days, and it shouldn't take long to, to, to select a vendor. So as, as far as, you know, from expeditiously, I think that will be addressed. But Mr. Heefe, as I mentioned, is, with, with his experience, and I've, and I've read the report, he can be involved either directly or indirectly.
Okay.
And really, that's at, at the direction.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
But if I can, but he's now an employee of the University of Virginia.
University, he's the general counsel.
He would have to get permission from his employer to, to do this, would be my guess. I'm, I'm thinking it would probably take longer to involve the state than, than to go through this route, because if you're going to have this on the street tomorrow and then have it back by the, what, the 12th?
Friday, next Friday.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't, I don't think we can get it done any quicker. I don't, I know the state wouldn't react as, as quickly as that, but I mean, you know, I think a lot of people are listening right now, so, so the people who are going to be putting in these things, I'm sure are paying attention, so they may reach out and talk to him to see if he would be a, a part of it, or if, if his employer would allow him to.
Yeah, and, and then the, the one thing with, with going out for a bid, and, and I'm sure Mr. Heefe is qualified, he's, you know, produced a report, the Procurement Act does say, we're practical, and I think that, you know, this is a situation where we can practically at least solicit other bidders to see who we have out there. As mentioned, you know, if you're already on a GSA contract, DGS contract, inherently you have some expertise and some experience and credentials, or you would not be on that GSA schedule.
Okay, Guy.
Could I, I'd like to refer back to Jim's question, just to clear the air on this. Have you considered going directly to the Attorney General and asking for assistance in lieu of the bidding process that you've outlined here?
No, the unfulfilled direction of the council.
Right.
If the council chooses to go that direction, that will be...
And you've chose, you have not done that because you believe that the, the scope of the resolution that we passed would not encompass going directly to the Attorney General.
Yes.
Aaron, and then Michael.
Well, I've, I've talked upon myself to the research at Charlottesville study, as well as Virginia Tech study, so I also reached out to my contacts at the state. I've spoken with the Attorney General, as well, we had a brief, well, pretty detailed conversation. To have their involvement in this would be unprecedented, as far as the state taking a vested or role within the independent study. What was recommended by the Attorney General was that we are doing it the right way, but their office will have available resources to ensure as far as guidance, not having any hands-on or any kind of approaches that. But as a resource, I said, these are the things we should look out for when choosing a firm or a third-party independent team to, to work with, and also gave things we should, if we had questions, they would more than help, more than happen to help guide us along those paths. But to, to this resolution point, I believe this is the, in the part in talking to the AG, the correct way to go forth with it.
Okay, Michael, and then Guy.
I just want to thank you for everything that you've done to prepare this presentation and join my colleagues and my appreciation, and our appreciation for your work. And it looks like you did a, quite a bit of due diligence in, before we arrived here today. And it just occurred to me as we were having this discussion that there's one really unique component of, of this situation that makes, that sets us apart from, from anything that we're comparing ourselves to, and that is that the event took place inside our municipal center. And I think there are many citizens and interested parties who have made note of that distinction. And I wonder if you've been able, in your research, I guess I have a couple of questions, or one question and one comment. I wonder in, in your research if you've been able to find any comparable, and I'm, I'm sorry to say that in some cases there are best practices, we've learned that, anything comparable that relates to our unique situation and the sensitivities that it presents. And then I guess my comment would be that I just think it's incumbent upon us to be particularly sensitive of that fact, because the whole point of this is to provide clarity and confidence in the results. And if in fact, the perception is that the city is investigating itself through this process, and we go through this process, and at the end of the day, it doesn't provide clarity and confidence, then we've provided nothing.
Yes.
So that's a particularly unique situation. I wonder if you could provide any thoughts on that.
Yes, so obviously, we did some research in regards to other events. San Bernardino, Washington Navy, Navy Yard, because they occurred and involved federal agencies, departments, you had the inspector general involved. Virginia Tech, a state university. So you were able to, the governor was able to put a task force together, because that was a state university. Charlottesville is very, the, the most comparable to, because of the fact it involved a locality. Okay, so if we're comparing locality to locality, furthermore, it happened in Virginia. So locality to locality, they went to an independent firm. They didn't use the IG, they didn't use the, the state Attorney General's office, they didn't, you know, create a task force, they hired a attorney, a law firm, and it was headed up mostly by, by Mr. Heefe. So in regards to comparisons and the approach that was taken, it wasn't federal, it wasn't private, and when it did, we had something comparable, and that's why Charlottesville is thrown out there. They went the route we're, we're utilizing in regards to hiring a independent consultant, and in their case, that independent consultant happened to be a law firm.
Okay, Guy.
I was just going to say, since I asked the question about the Attorney General's office, I want to thank Councilman Rouse for his independent investigation of that, because I thought that would be the response. And I, I am entirely, entirely in agreement with the process that you've outlined here, and I thank you for doing it on such quick notice and getting a lot of work done in a short period of time. Thank you.
Okay, Sabrina.
The only thing I would say is if we can, if we can have the Attorney General's office involved at the level at U-State, Mr. Rouse, I think that that would be very helpful.
As a resource.
They sent something in writing to that effect, I'd love to see it, but I would certainly like to have their involvement as much as possible, make sure there's transparency, we're expediting it as, as quickly as possible, that's my interest, and I want to make sure that that's done.
Yes.
So I'd like to have whatever level of support, involvement they can have in it, I'd like to make sure we do that.
Absolutely, and when, when the firm is in fact selected, we'll certainly have the vendor come to council and address council. You know, obviously, we, we want to make sure it's independent, so it's not asking for direction, because I think that's spelled out in the resolution, but be here to discuss the general approach, alleviate any concerns, provide assurance that it will in fact be independent, you know, making sure there is engagement. You know, we want somebody that's not operating in a, in a vacuum, but initially upfront engaging those that were impacted, as long as it fits within the scope of the services we're, we're requesting, because the scope of services are pretty broad. So some of the specific questions that I've seen, particularly from some of the family members, I'm sure they will be directly addressed. And so the end product will be something that addresses not only what occurred, some specific questions of the family members, but going forward as well. You know, some of the best practices we can put in place going forward.
Good, Ms. Henley, then Guy.
Well, I was just, I was just wondering how much involvement the city council can have going forward. I don't think it's appropriate for there to be any.
Well, I think just, not, not any involvement, but just a introduction or a briefing of who the vendor is.
We're just the same thing we've got here today, telling them what to do. And I don't think that's, that's not independent.
And, and that's really up to you, but, so, so when that time comes, I'll take that from your, your direction.
Okay, Guy, then Michael.
I just was going to comment, Lynn said that what I'm very interested in is the best, make sure it's part of the solicitation, is a best practices review for going forward.
Okay, Michael, and then Jim Wood.
I don't want to continue to focus, to, to spend too much time on the point, but I think that Councilmember Henley made an excellent point, and, but I also understand Councilmember Wooton's desire to have some confidence in the process and that the investigation is, is going to be started. So I would just recommend that we be very thoughtful and considerate. Perhaps it's a presentation about the process, but I think we need to be very extremely thoughtful about making recommendations or interfering with the, with the contractor, whoever that firm may be.
Absolutely.
Because that would erode the, the, the independent nature of the investigation, and I think would erode the public's confidence in the process, and that would be of tremendous concern to me.
Okay, Mr. Wood, and then Mr. Rouse.
And I, and I understand where everybody's coming from on this, I certainly understand where Barbara's coming on this, but I think it's, it's important, because just if you look on social media, you see dozens and dozens and dozens of completely inaccurate posts about, about the event and, and theories that, that are cringe-worthy frankly, and I, I think that, I think it's critically important that, that the public is aware that there's an independent entity out there, and that there is some ability that members of the public who, who may have information or think they have information, have some method to, to get information to, to this, this entity. I, I think if, if there's any sort of briefing or anything like that done, it should be extraordinarily high-level, saying, this is what we're going to do, and not say, if you guys are okay with it, but this is what we're going to do, because ultimately that's it. And, and we have to figure out exactly what, what form that takes, because otherwise, I think, I think it, it could taint the process. But we, we need to have no hands at all on this, and, and frankly, the city doesn't need to have hands on this at all. I don't think the state needs to, I, I think it needs to be a truly independent, independent investigation. I, I think the way that, that you're going about this is the way to do it. I, I think the, the fact that you say you've already gotten unsolicited requests on this, I think that, that's good, that shows that there are entities out there. I don't know if the quality of these entities that are reaching out to you are, are, are what you would consider good, but I still think that, that, that's, that's good, and I think it's just important that there is, there's a firewall there. But, but we still have to be able to, to communicate through that wall to people so that, so they know what's going on. So we have to figure out the best way to do it, in my opinion, and, and, and maybe there's, there's a way that we can do it otherwise, but there needs to be no influence input at all from us, period.
Aaron, Rosemary.
I echo, echo those sentiments by Councilmember. I just think it's, it's also important that we be clear in the direction and where we go with this, this resolution here, because, you know, so we don't have hands on, so that whoever we decide to choose do not have to come back to us for sense of direction. So I think it's clear that we get the, the language, and from where I see, it's pretty clear, I like to add something into it, but I think we have to allow the, this to be truly independent, to allow the facts to take it, no matter where it goes, for transparency, for whatever this investigation may, may uncover, that we are no, nowhere near this. So I echo those sentiments, that, but I just want to make sure this is what this is, this is what we're trying to do, making sure this direction is clear. So I would just, I would ask council, if you, if you have any reservations right now, like you need to speak up, because once we vote on this tonight, then I don't think we should be taking it up again after the investigation is done, changing things, because that's going to...
I do have some comments, but I want to make them out there.
Yep.
Rosemary?
And maybe this has been done, so just tell me, oh, we, we've already thought of that, but is there any consideration to setting up a hotline for people that have information that, for the, for the police and for the independent investigator?
Yes.
We have the stop fraud and abuse hotline.
Yes, absolutely. So as part of, as part of Charlottesville, they actually created a, you know, the firm that was hired, created a portal for not only to provide information, but to actually upload, if they had pictures of something that happened, if they had documents, if they wanted to leave a voicemail, an email. So a portal, they established, they controlled that anybody, whether you were there, impacted, or somehow have some sort of information you thought would be useful, and that is something obviously similar that would have to take place, you know, and, and, and we can stress that as, as we finalize, you know, and, and make sure we let them know if there's things from within the city. As a facilitator, we could, you know, provide them access to, you know, documents or, and so forth. So yes, there will be a portal for citizens, employees, victim families, any information that they have gathered that they feel will be useful to the investigators, there will be a tool for them to be able to get that in. There will be a tool for them to be able to get that information to them directly.
And thank you for that, because there's so much out there, and there's a lot of noise out there. And, you know, in the spirit of why we're doing this, for the transparency and for making sure everybody is comfortable and all the reasons that we are, you know, we hear the stories, well, they're afraid to speak, or they don't want to... So we need to make sure that there is an outlet for people to go to, that they don't have to feel, you know, have any fear of sharing their information.
Absolutely. And as part of the, you know, as part of the investigation to gather information, there's going to be interviews conducted at all levels. So those that choose to, obviously, no one will be compelled to, but if they choose to and wish to speak to the firm and members of their team, they'll be provided that opportunity.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just want to make sure I'm clear. In no way and no circumstance do I want to interfere as a council member in the process, especially as an advocate for transparency that would make sense. What my request is, it would be if there is a time, and I don't know, we've never done this before, this is something that's new to all of us, but if there is at any time a need to confer with council, my request is that we all be conferred with, not one or two people, everybody, so that everybody's on the same page. That's my request.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and the other point I want to say is, I've heard that people are saying that the investigation will start sometime in August. I'm not sure where that perception is coming from, but it's my understanding that the investigation will begin as soon as that independent investigator company or entity is procured.
Yes.
They will start at that point. I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, the goal is as soon as possible. As I mentioned, we want to do it quickly, but not rushed.
Sure.
So we're taking, doing some due diligence, but in doing some upfront preparation of research, I feel that we shouldn't have any issue with interests and receiving proposals from firms that are qualified and capable of doing this type of work.
Sure, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you all very much for the discussion.
Thanks, Lyndon. Sir, your fourth discussion topic for today is guns in the workplace.
Okay. You know, I think this is part and parcel of a discussion of overall, you know, safety in the buildings and everything. And, you know, we did allot time for discussion. If I could just say, if it's possible, we'd like to get into closed session around four because we have a heavy topic, but please understand that this discussion will be ongoing. As I mentioned before, we got the special session next week. We'll be having also eventually the results of the police investigation and the external review that we've been talking about. So this is a topic that I think is going to be ongoing for, you know, quite a while, but I think at the request of some council members, you know, we should at least start the discussion tonight. So we'll open it up.
Anybody?
I'll finish. Thing's important that when we discuss this topic, that we keep our city employees in mind as well. I mean, they're the ones who work here nine to five every single day. So I think it's important that we have this discussion, but also that we do our most to reach out to them as well, as well as the rest of our city and visitors who may visit here to understand, you know, whether they're taking their perspectives on this as well. But the regulation of firearms allowed in our city, in my judgment, is essential for the safety and welfare of employees, citizens, and visitors. The evidence is clear that the availability of firearms in our city, it's something that we gotta take seriously. I think we all do that. But I think it's something that we have to understand that it's a tough topic to have, it's a tough discussion to have, but it's one we have to have. I don't think anyone foresaw the tragic events of May 31st happening here in Virginia Beach at all. But I just want to make sure that, you know, in the recent political atmosphere, that we don't forget our humanity first, that people come first within our city, and that this regulation, that this firearm discussion is not to put one side against the other side, but to let everybody know we are all on the same side. And that firearm, that the regulation of firearms is not the beginning of restriction of your Second Amendment or anything of that nature, but it's a way to make sure we have responsible legislation, a regulation of firearms within our city, just as well as, you know, alcohol and prescription drugs and things of that nature are regulated on a federal, state, and local level. I think it's important that we also have an important conversation of regulations of firearms within our city. And at the end of the day, it's about making sure that everyone who visit, lives here, works here, feels safe within their environment. And as leaders of our city, it's upon us to have these tough conversations, but to make sure we reach out to everyone as well, to understand their perspectives, and then have legislation to implement, to ensure the safetiness of everyone who works here and visits here and steps foot within our city, so.
All right, very, very good point. Anybody else? Jess?
Kind of want to piggyback on Erin a little bit. I do think in this discussion, it's imperative that we reach out to the people that have to work in these buildings and get a really good understanding of how they're feeling because, and I don't know, maybe this is something HR does every once in a while, but I know that at least in my work experience, sometimes the corporation will take a pulse check and just say, "Here's a quick survey. We're not asking who you are. We just want to know what you think." Because I do really believe that if you were to go and pool 10 employees and ask them the same question, you'd probably get a pretty split answer. And that's just been my interaction, and I could be wrong. Maybe I'm in an echo chamber, I don't know. But I want to know, I want to know, one, are there people that feel unsafe? If they feel unsafe, what do they feel is making them unsafe? Maybe it's not that it's a gun, or maybe it is that it's a gun. I don't know, but I don't feel like we've asked. You know, if they don't feel safe, then what do they feel would improve it? If they do feel safe, why do they feel safe? Is it because of their proximity to the police station? Is it, you know, whatever it is? So I would really like to see us get with somebody who has a much better understanding of how IT works and come up with an anonymous survey that we can send out to every city employee and say, "Give us your honest unabridged opinion. Don't hold back. We want to know how you feel," but find a way to make sure it is truly anonymous. Because I really think we need to go after what people are feeling and get as close to, you know, a good picture. And I would prefer that the questions be open-ended and not multiple-choice, so that people are just saying, "This is how I feel," and have no fear of any kind of, I guess, retaliation. I don't really like that word, but I don't want anybody to feel like if they give us their opinion that they're going to be ostracized or persecuted for that opinion. Because they're really, I mean, it's, I don't think this is, there's a simple answer to this. I think that the answer lays somewhere in the middle, but we need to gather as much information as possible. And I think a simple way of doing that would be taking a pulse check on the employees and saying, "How do you feel, and what could we be doing better?"
That's a great idea.
I like it.
Well, I tell you, because I know that we can do that probably, maybe not tomorrow, but pretty quickly because they do the member survey that's anonymous, and I think it'd probably be reasonably easy to craft a specific member survey on feelings of safety and that sort of thing. They are anonymous, and I think that's good. I mean, I think that's a great idea, Jessica, because absent us getting a pulse check from the employees, I think this whole discussion is premature.
Anybody else? Sabrina?
I just wanted to, I think, and I talked with, well, I didn't talk with Dave, but I emailed Dave about a meeting with the staff as council members to address some of the, well, one, I had someone actually approach me, staff member, who said, "We'd like to give our opinion. We'd like for you to meet with us." So that initiated a contact to Dave to ask when we could have a forum with the staff and talk to them about, number one, they would like to give their input on the options for the building. Number two, they do want to talk about workplace safety and security measures, guns in the workplace. And so I think Dave was saying that next Wednesday will be a good time. After our session in governance, the governance session that we have that starts at 6:00. So I think when I sent the email out, I put 5:00. But it will start at 5:00 o'clock next Wednesday, the 10:00. But during that one 5:00 to 6:00, that will be an hour, I have a presenter to come in and will present. But that 6:00 to 7:00 or 6:00 to 8:00 should be a time where the council, if you're available, if you do actually want to engage with the staff on some of these tough issues, they have that opportunity to come, and so do you. And that'll be next Wednesday after our governance session.
What's the presenter? What is that?
This, it will be a person presenting on grief counseling.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Present?
Grief counseling.
Is that from the city?
No, it's an independent organization that I have.
I don't know if I have a problem with that.
Yeah, that might be...
You know, I think, you know, that's a city function, Sabrina.
Well, we can scrap that. We can scrap that. So we can change the timeframe from 6:00 to 7:00.
That would be great.
There's your staff. There's a time for you to meet with the staff, engage with them, as you say, on issues that you feel are really tough and serious. There's your opportunity.
I would appreciate the opportunity.
I don't know. I kind of think this kind of thing is what we'd be talking about in the governance thing. I think we've got a lot to talk about in that. And I kind of think this is snowballing on something that's already cool. But I wanted to talk in general about the security. If you wanted to follow that particular thing, I'll say my comments.
Go ahead, Ms. Hahn.
I just don't want to see this security thing just, I wish it were not connected with the guns thing. I think it should be totally just security because I think we've already clouded the issue if we're making it a guns issue. I think we need to look at security from each building because all of our city employees are in different kinds of buildings. I mean, what about a library or a rec center? And, I mean, I think all of them need to be considered, and employees everywhere, as well as the public, should help us look at how do we address the question of security in all of our public buildings. And I think it'll be different for each building, certainly, because of the nature of the buildings and so forth. So I think we did have a resolution that asked for an overall assessment of security. But I really think this is something that should begin right away with the opportunity of employees to discuss their particular situation in their building. I think we had one of the speakers that read something that someone from the new Parks and Rec Administration building commented about because of the way that building is set up. Every building is going to be different. Every situation will be different, and I think they all have to be looked at differently. And I think probably the best people to give us that input are the employees who work there as a start. But I really think this whole question of security, and there would be different answers for different situations. But I think it's a very, very broad question, and I certainly don't think it should center around guns.
Jess?
I have a question, Sabrina, about the forum that you'd emailed us about. Is that, really, I guess I have a question for Mark. Is that an advertised meeting? Because don't we have an issue with too many council members being present?
If more than two members of the body are to be present and city businesses to be discussed, then it has to be publicly noticed and the public is able to attend.
But do we have enough time to do that?
We would, it should be posted as soon as possible once the schedule is made, yes.
I think, the only other comment I had about that, and I appreciate you taking the initiative on it, because I really do think we need to have every employee's perspective. I have a little concern because it's such a controversial issue. I don't want to create an environment where people from opposing viewpoints are effectively outed and then feel that they've disrupted their work environment because somebody can't reconcile a difference. And I think we probably have some of the best employees in the world, but I see how this conversation is on the internet, and it's, people are horrible to each other. And they, truthfully, deep down inside, if you were having that conversation in another context other than the internet, maybe they wouldn't, maybe it wouldn't evolve the way it does. But I do have, I'm a little worried, which is why I wanted a survey that could be anonymous, because then we can get the unabridged truth from somebody, and nobody has to fear persecution because I have a different perspective than so-and-so. And I just know that there are people who are very passionate on all sides of this issue.
Okay, Sabrina?
So then my proposal would be, because this is a time we can look at that agenda for that day. Thank you for speaking up. What I would propose then, people are also concerned about the options for the buildings.
Yeah, I think that's...
Let's give them an opportunity to talk about some of the things they want. One of those things is that we don't have to talk about guns. There you go.
I think that's great. I don't, I didn't, I hope I didn't come across as...
No, I...
I just want to make sure we keep people as cordial as possible, and nobody feels like they're going to have, you know, want people to be comfortable.
And that's good, and I want to make sure that those who are reaching out to me saying, "When are you all going to talk to us as staff members?", that we take the opportunity and talk to them, albeit if it's just to talk to them about the options for the building, just engage them for some of the things that they want to talk about. We can say, "No discussions about guns today." There you go.
Yep, Aaron.
But, you know, it's been a little bit over a month since this tragic event, and we don't, we're Dillon Rule State, we understand that, so that power needs to come from the state to let us regulate guns within our building. But I don't want us to shy away from having the tough conversations. And I think it's beholden upon us to make sure that fertile ground is one of making sure we hear each other. You know, as a former professional athlete and a one guy that was prideful on the defensive side of the ball, you had guys who were just as prideful on the offensive side of it too. But we always understood that we played on the same team, that if we didn't work together, then we will lose. So I think it's important that we hear all the employees, and I've listened to many employees, I've listened to some families as well on both sides of the issue. I think Jessica makes a great point. There's, I think it's pretty much split down the middle, but that conversation has to be started around this table. We are the elected officials. If we can't shy away from and expect our constituents to start this conversation on their own, because if they do that, then fear will run amok. And that's what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with fear. I think we need to have a realistic, constructive conversation on the best way to go forward together. And I think it's, and while I know it starts with having that conversation around this table, because it is about public safety. Guns is messed up in that. There are certain policies that prohibit our workers from carrying a gun, but the public can carry a gun. So there is that conversation that needs to be had around that issue. What I see, though, is the fact that we let it politicize the fact where it pushes us apart when it shouldn't. It should bring us together. It shouldn't be a you versus me, or I versus them. It should be a we, a unified conversation about constructive discussions. Okay, how can we balance the two? How can we make sure everyone feels safe? And that's why I think that conversation needs to be had, and this will be the first of many, but I don't want to shy away from those tough conversations. We have to have those conversations in order to go forward. I think the public demands that of us. Those who tragically killed their families demand that of us as well. And quite frankly, I would demand that from each one of us to make sure we have those tough conversations. I can tell you just from being elected, I didn't expect... I can tell you just from being elected, I didn't expect to have this conversation, be sitting in this position, but here we are. So now I don't want to say, "Well, we don't want to have that." No, it starts today. It's going to start every single day. And we need to have it.
Aaron, I agree with you 100%. And that's why I'm saying today was just the first step and then, but like I said, the next, you know, I guess we got next week and then we got, you know, break coming up. But by then we'll know what the General Assembly is doing, so at least we got some, you know, focus what's going on. And then certainly as the, the result of, you know, the investigation is out. But I agree, it's got to be ongoing and we can't be afraid to talk about anything. I agree with you 100%. Rosemary?
I think Jessica's idea is a grand one. And I think so we can do that, that also is probably going to give us a lot of insight and information on how we deal with the other, you know, conversations that we need to have. Not that you, there may be lots of conversations.
Yeah.
But if you can say, like, 75%, see this as an issue, well, maybe that's what you tackle first.
Right.
And then, not that all of them aren't important, but you can prioritize those. And so I think the, I think her idea and getting that, and that's going to be good data, good information, and then we can prioritize how we move forward.
Yep, Jess, and then Guy.
Can I ask, I'm sure whoever is going to do this, can I ask that we get a draft of the potential questions so that we can, as a body, can have a discussion on what we think needs to be addressed and maybe there's something that we're, we're missing? I, my, my key takeaways are, I want to know if people feel safe, if, why or why not, and how they feel just about general safety policy in the city. But I'm sure there are other, more specific questions that members might have, but I'd like to see what you guys can work up and, and then have a discussion about that. And I don't know that we want to implement that tomorrow. I, I do think we should act, what is it that Lyndon said, quickly, but, you know, efficiently.
Yeah, Guy, then Jim.
He did. He did, he said it so well.
Realizing that 15 of the 16 shooting victims were employees of the city, it is entirely appropriate, we start with employees. And we, we do have some safety measures involving guns that are within our control and that is whether employees, the policy that we have now would continue. So I'm all in favor of that. I just don't want people to forget that we need to do this continuously if for no other reason than one, lots of other people come into these buildings, the public, and one of the victims was a member of the public here, just to remind us of that. And two, I would extend it beyond buildings. I think in public spaces and our, we need to, might as well go on and do parks and concerts and those things. I think we need a comprehensive safety review. And I don't tie it because if it's simply a question of, well, that wouldn't have prevented this incident, then we are way too narrowly focused. And we need a, I believe we need a comprehensive focus. I think it will be helpful also to do it again with employees and others, once we get a report from this investigation, because if they say best practices would be, and you know, obviously there'll probably be some costs involved in that, and maybe we'll just have to say, "Would you be willing to give up this in order to get that?" And if we can get somebody that's experienced in testing to take a look at whatever we decide here and make suggestions, although that may slow it down a little, it might be a good idea to make sure that people who do these, do this for a living have some look at the testing so that we can say the data is, in fact, valid, not just because we say it is. That's all.
Jim, did you have something?
Yeah, I did. Just, just a couple of things that people have said. You know, going back to Jessica's idea, I think that the concept of doing this anonymously is, is going to be very good. Also, the fact that it's getting out to all the employees, because frankly, we can't have an event where 7,000 employees come here, it's just not going to happen. But 7,000 employees can get an email and a link, and you know, it's up to them whether or not they want to participate. I think, I feel pretty strongly that if they have strong feelings about it, they are going to participate. You know, and, and we talk about this, guns is one of the most polarizing issues that face this, this country. I mean, people are very adamant on both sides of the issue. We saw that the other night. And it's ripe for politicizing. I mean, it is ripe for politicizing and, and it's, it's going to get, it's going to get worse. I mean, I, there, there's been too much of that already by others not around this table politicizing our tragedy. And we just have to, we have to get past that and not participate in, in that at all. You know, that, that, that's just, that's just something we don't need to be involved with. But, but I would echo what, what Jessica's comment is, is if we can come up with, with just, just a list of a couple of questions, that maybe we could come back at the next meeting or so and just, and just talk about and then send them out. Because I think ultimately, Guy, you're right, you know, we can, we can get this information, we can, we can compile this data, we, we can see what people say, the fact that making it open-ended and, and you know, allowing some, some measure, but also open-ending it a little bit to, to get the information, I think is going to be something that, that will allow us to see some pretty clear trends and see where we need to go. You know, and still, of course, have, have the outreach to, to employees face-to-face if people want to do that. But I, but I think the, where we're going to get the most bang for our buck is going to be from, from a survey that, that employees can do anonymously and they don't, they don't fear the retribution that, that you talked about.
Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel strongly that the focus of our discussion as we move forward should be more, as Council Member Henley said, more broadly about safety. Guns is a polarizing issue. And I recognize that it's incumbent upon us to, as council members, to take on the difficult conversations. But I, I just think it's worth noting that there's a tremendous diversity of, of theory on this topic. And I'm not in a position at this point to weigh in on the merits of those theories at this time. But what I will tell you is that I had an opportunity to speak yesterday with a, a member of the city staff who feels very strongly on one side of this issue. And what he told me was that he didn't want to have to engage in this debate at, at this time, but he felt compelled to. And I think we need to be sensitive and thoughtful about the position that we put not only city staff, but the, the public in, in particular at this time. And so that's my request, is that as we move forward these discussions, which we must, that the discussion be very, very broad about safety and included in that topic certainly is the topic of firearms. But it's, it really is a, a discussion about safety. And I think that by choosing to focus on firearms, we are putting citizens and city staff in a very uncomfortable position. And I think we need to be careful about doing that.
Okay. Okay, at this point, we're going to get ready to just move forward. But I want to thank everybody. We talked about three very tough, sensitive issues today, and I thank everybody for their tenor and their participation. And be assured the conversation will be going on. Thank you all very much. Okay, council liaison reports. Barbara, then Jess.
Oh, I'm not as well-versed as I should be bringing this to you, but there's a time element. I'm a liaison to Bikes and Trails Advisory Committee as one of them. And they are looking at, I would call it a grant, which only comes around every now and then, that they would like to apply for, to, to address phase one of their top priority, which is a mixed-use path within the Old Norfolk Southern right-of-way. And they had asked me to submit a letter of support for funding, for applying for this grant, but I certainly would never do it without the full knowledge of the council. And I just wondered what your idea would be about supporting this grant if I signed it as liaison.
I, I would support it.
I just have a question. So would it be, I mean, the right-of-way is only so wide.
Be a 10-foot part of it and they have, this part is under design, yes.
We were going to do-
Oh, yeah.
A trail anyway, when the light rail was being planned. So as long as it doesn't encroach on a future multimodal, whatever it is that we, I have no idea. And I'm, I'm not saying a light rail is an idea.
They're very sensitive to that. It would be-
But we just need to make sure that there's space, because that is the spine of the city and-
It would be a 10-foot wide shared use path, begin, this phase would be from the Housing Resource Center toward the town center in that section. But this is an opportunity that doesn't come along often and, of course, we would want to get some grant money if it's available. So if it's okay with you all, I will-
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Barbara. Jess?
I just wanted to share, if anybody hadn't heard, the good news. Kempsville Library is back open and it is beautiful and I'm very excited. They've done a great job. For any parents listening, the children's section of the library is now enclosed, so you don't have to worry about where your kid is and panic like I do looking over the bookshelves. But it's really well done. I'm excited to see the rest of the libraries that are closed open back up. But that, it opened on Wednesday and it is back in action, so.
Thank you for facilitating that opening.
That was fabulous.
Any other liaison reports? Okay, how about council comments, anybody? Michael, and then Barbara?
I just want to say that, I just want to tell everyone that at 6:00 PM on July 11th at Green Run High School, I'll be hosting a listening session for, of course, members of the Rose, residents of the Rose Hall District, but more broadly, anyone from the city. And this is a chance to continue to introduce myself to the district and to the residents and, but more importantly, for me to hear the, the thoughts and the concerns of residents from throughout the city. So I wanted to share that information.
Thank you, Barbara.
It was mentioned a little while ago, but I think in passing, and it needs to, to be emphasized a lot more than it was. We did get the AAA bond rating announcement from all three rating agencies, which I think is absolutely fantastic. And we need to really let the staff know how much we appreciate all the work that they've done to make that happen. Thank you. And I think that's a monumental achievement for us this particular year.
Oh, thank you, you know, given all the challenges. Guy?
I applaud that as well. Well, I'd like to talk a little bit about what's going on at the Oceanfront. One, the Resort Area Strategic Action Plan Public Hearing was quite successful. I think we had a good turnout. Councilwoman Wilson was there, I was there, and a lot of other people were there. It's standing room only around the, and that steering committee is meeting, I think, in the next few days to continue that process. Everyone has heard, I'm sure, about the scooter issue. And there's good news on that front. And I'd like to ask the city manager to bring us up to date on where we are with that. Brian Solis and others have done a great work in a short amount of time to try to get a handle on this and actually effectively get something done.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Deputy City Manager Ron Williams to step to the podium to give you an update, but I'm really pleased with what Bird Scooters' engagement with the city. The new scooters are here. And I asked Ron to, and Brian to work diligently to get some geofencing in place. And then after work last night, I dispatched Ron to go get a scooter and go up and down the beach and-
Wait, wait, hold on that.
I, I did. I asked my deputy city manager to personally go inspect the geofencing. And I'm here to give you a report on what they've done and also to have you understand that because you're going on break, we're, we're going to ask your indulgence to consider this an awareness. And then we're, we're out polling our stakeholders to change, modify your current regulations with regards to where the scooters might be able to operate. And we're going to ask Ron to, to brief that with you. And then Brian's going to come in next week and give you another briefing on how that's progressing. And maybe we can, we can change the dynamics of this so that our tourists can still use them, but they're not creating a safety hazard in certain areas. So Ron, figure out what I just told you to do and have at it.
Yes. So Captain Wichita, Second Precinct, has been very engaged in this as well. Brian, you received a memo, I believe, in your Friday package where Brian has stood up a committee, a shared mobility committee. I mean, we, as we've seen from Pokemon Go to Uber to Lyft, that, that technology evolves very quickly. And Bird's just landed on us last year. And so the committee is looking at what, what's in, in the industry, what's evolving, and then looking at regulations we had. A lot of what is in our current ordinances was drafted, I think, when we had the segways that were evolving, for example. So constantly changing, and you can try to hamstring something in with certain regulations. But the technology was the key piece in the past 48 hours that is really helping with, frankly, with safety of the transporters and those that are using them. There has been analysis done of what Norfolk has done with their regulation. And frankly, that's essentially like a service contract and a franchise agreement for serving the city, but it doesn't restrict where they operate unless you're doing direct enforcement from law enforcement. And what Bird was able to do, and we've been asking for a year that they, that they do this, and I think that their scalability as, as a company is now where they can do that quickly and deploy it. And that is that they, they fence off electronically where, where they can operate. And so after the test last night, the field test, they actually made another adjustment that Captain Wichita asked them to make this morning. And so basically what we have is, is proactively trying to look at what you would be considering in your ordinance next week. Currently, they are not allowed to operate east of Pacific Avenue. But where they have been operating is all over the place, and predominantly on the boardwalk and the bike path. And frankly, the speeds by which they operate just currently are, are not a good mix for the pedestrians that should be on the boardwalk or the bicycles that should be on the bike path. And so what they did was geofenced it on Sunday evening where that it cannot go east of Atlantic Avenue onto the bike path or boardwalk. What they, what they did, though, is so that you can get the, you don't want someone coming to an abrupt stop and it just not work. And so it, it tapers down to a slower speed. Sunday, when they first engaged it, they were doing five miles an hour. And the adjustment made this morning was two things. Number one, to bring it down to three miles an hour. And then it also sends a text to your phone, "You are in a prohibited zone." And so allowing it to continue to operate enables you to coax it back to the proper zone. The, the new ones this year are quite heavy, frankly, for a scooter. They're not like the Razor that you buy at Walmart or Target. They have a battery pack, a light, they have speedometers, they've got brakes, serious tires and quite a bit of aluminum and steel in there. So this allows you to coax it back. And so, yeah, it works. I was traveling at 17 and a half mile, and a half miles an hour for one that's almost fully charged. That was what it was running with my 200-plus pounds on there. And then when I tried to divert to the boardwalk, it quickly slowed down to that five mile an hour. I was able to turn it back around and then it did pick back up the speed. Tried a penetration from access streets, but then also came in around the, the Rudy Loop, the, the Rudy Walk, and then the zone shut it down as well. So that's working. We think that'll make a big difference and we should see that over this holiday week. And then we do ask for your consideration of this incremental approach of allowing them to operate in the trolley lanes like we already have for bicycle share currently.
Okay, Rosemary?
I see them every day and it's like an accident waiting to happen.
And they do happen.
Yes. And they go very fast and in the most inappropriate places, but also they leave them scattered all over the sidewalks and, one, they're not very attractive to see that in our city, but also it hinders people on sidewalks to, to go around them. So is there anything being done about how they put them back in place and not leave them in an inappropriate place?
Yes, they're instructed and you have to take a picture of it or make sure that you leave it not blocking the right-of-way or else it'll continue to charge you. Make sure there's a confirmation of that. And then, yes, through police enforcement, we also confiscate them as well.
Yep.
We're going to talk about this next week because I have a number of concerns, but I don't, we've got other-
Yeah, PD will be here next week. Brian's actually out, but the captain will be prepared to brief on it.
Okay, at this point, if we can get into, you know, executive session.
There's nothing on consent.
There's nothing on consent. So at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice of such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-37A7, dome site. Public contract, discussions of the award of a public contract involving the-
Discussions of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussions in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy, the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-37A29, Dome Site. Personnel matters. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotions, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-37A1. First, council appointees, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agency appointees, and also performance of council appointees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dennis?
Hi.
Ms. Henley?
Hi.
Ms. Ralph?
Hi.
Ms. Burridge?
Hi.
Ms. Fowler?
Hi.
Ms. Wilson? Hi.
Ms. Raylins? Hi.
Mayor Dyer?
Hi. Okay.
Let's re, uh, take.